I'd like to call the meeting order. First, we'll have the invocation by... Vince, would you like to do it today?
Please.
Okay. Vince and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Vince Maggio too. Please rise.
There we go, double duty.
Yeah. Thank you, Jesus, for all of us being here today. Thank you for the United States and first responders and the military. And please take care of all our families. In your name, amen.
Amen.
All right, we say the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the adopted Bojer City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record. It shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item. That's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. And if there is a needing, a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City council-appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
Okay, I'd like, need a motion to approve the minutes of the January 11th 22nd meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, do you have any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, counsel, I need a motion to approve today's agenda. First, let me, I'd like to make a motion to amend new business number five.
No, sir, we'll do that at the, when we get to that.
Oh, you want to do it then?
Mm-hmm.
And we need a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Just say your name and address, please.
My name is Adam Bass. My address is 3104 Parrish Place, Bojer City, Louisiana, 71111. First of all, thank you for letting me speak, President Williams, counsel, Ms. Phyllis, and Attorney General, Mr. Jacobs. I came to speak today because I believe there was a study that was done by the school board around some bus stops on Barksdale Boulevard. I know there has been a lot of discussion about sport tran recently. I think that those studies may be helpful to you guys in making your determination. I just wanted to make sure that as I looked at the minutes of some past meetings as a citizen, to make y'all aware of that in case you would need to use it in your decision. I don't know if y'all are planning to do a study to analyze anything else for public transportation and sport tran, but should y'all choose to do a study, I believe that that may be a good resource for you. So I don't know if that's appropriate to put on the agenda now or if you would need to do a resolution for a future date, but I wanted to make sure that as a citizen, I stood up and made sure I made you guys aware of that, so.
Yeah, there's nothing on the agenda for the sport tran at this time, so if the council chooses to, they'd have to do a resolution at a later time or ordinance to appropriate money to do a study.
Or we could also do a resolution to take into account or to consider or to submit the previous study that was done by the Bojer Parish School Board.
Okay.
Yeah, we might just write a letter and see if we can get it.
Okay.
Maybe helpful for our study.
Thank you so much. And I don't know if it's for extra credit, but I promoted him to Attorney General. So make sure you increase his salary commensurate with what I just promoted him to. So thank y'all very much.
I think his might be going down.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda? I'm sorry.
Uh-huh.
He made the motion.
I do.
All right, counsel. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Bids, witness opening of sealed bids for bid number 21-2125, 722 Garden Street demolition.
Good afternoon, counsel. The administrative court recommended the demolition of the structure back in November 9th, 2021 meeting. There is one addendum. That addendum was to postpone the bid opening. Originally was scheduled for January the 4th meeting, and then we postponed it till now. Our first bid is from Three Gen Construction LLC. Their bid bond is included. That amount is for $11,009.67. That's 11,967.00. Next, we have CDE Construction LLC. Their bid bond is included. It is for $14,310. That's 14,310.00. And they have acknowledged the addendum. And if y'all can record on the first one from Three Gen, they did acknowledge that addendum also. Next, we have Eagle Industries LLC. They have included a cashier's check for 5% of their bid. It is for $30,000. That's 3,000,000.00. And they acknowledged the addendum. Next, we have Leithon Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. Their bid is for $9,800. That's 9,800.00. Next, we have Precision Builders, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. Their bid bond is included. It is for $16,750. That's 1,6750.00. Our last bid is from Redtail Contracting LLC. Bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum, and it is for $10,447. That's 1,0447.00. I ask that the council approve the reading of the bids.
So moved.
Second.
Phyllis, on bids, do we have to ask the audience?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any question from the audience on these bids? Counsel, any questions? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number 21-2123, 1316 Beverly demolition.
Counsel, the administrative court decided, recommended the demolition at the November 9th, 2021 meeting. We had one addendum postponing the bid opening till today. Our first bid is from Three Gen Construction LLC. Addendum is acknowledged. Their bid bond is included and is for $7,899.7899.00. Next, we have CDE Construction LLC. Addendum is acknowledged. Bid bond is included, and it is for $7,452.7452.00. Next, we have Eagle Industries LLC. They have included a cashier's check instead of their bid bond. They have acknowledged the addendum. Their bid is for $21,500. That's 2,150.00. Next, we have Leithon Construction LLC. Addendum is acknowledged. Bid bond is included. It's for $12,500. That's 1,250.00. Our final bid is from Redtail Contracting LLC. They have acknowledged the addendum. Their bid bond is included. It's for $7,078. That's 7,078.00. Counsel, I ask your approval of the reading of the bids.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience on these bids? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Unfinished business. Adopting ordinance to declare the completion of the Elsa Jane Drainage Repair Project by Foley Construction, Inc. at a total construction cost of $535,000, including change order number one in the amount of $35,000 to amend the ordinance 69 of 2021. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance amending the 2022 sales tax capital improvement budget to provide an appropriation of $66,000 to replace the wireless systems for city hall, public service complex, public safety training facility, and the civic center. Final reading?
So moved.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance appropriating $30,000 from the 2022 general fund fund balance to hire Gary D. Joyner, Ph.D., with Precision Cardiographics as redistricting service provider for the city of Bojer City and authorize Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached contract. Final reading?
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business. Introduce an ordinance to amend ordinance 17 of 2021 to replace the Bruce Street Forest Main, adding $195,000 to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund to cover all project costs and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with David Lawler Construction, Inc. for completion of work. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple of questions real quick. Has this project already, already started?
Construction has not.
Okay. Because I pulled up, when I was looking at it, I pulled up ordinance 17 of 2021. And the wording in that made it sound like it was kind of important to get done, so I didn't know if we had started it yet.
Very, very important. What's held us up is property acquisition. We had to acquire several utility services. We're relaying the Forest Main to that lift station, and so that just took a long time.
Gotcha. And I guess my only other concern is the addition of $195,000. Specifically, let me see, let me pull it up here so I say the right numbers. In the original ordinance, it's, we, it was for $95,000, correct? And it said in here that that was enough to, enough money for the project, which we know the bid came in a little bit higher, but also, also for engineering survey easement acquisition and related project expenses. However, the new invoice of $156,000 from Man Shack has engineering for $4,000, a residential inspection for $45,000, right-of-way costs $40,000, bypass pumping efforts $50,000. So just Man Shack's miscellaneous service and fees is more than what was originally asked for.
Yeah, and those aren't Man Shack's miscellaneous service and fees. So the bypass pumping is not provided by Man Shack. We had $50,000 in there. We've been bypassing that station and renting hoes and, and working on pumps now for the last 12 months. So that's, that's done by other providers, not Man Shack. Same with the right-of-way acquisition. The city hires a right-of-way specialist as well as appraisers, as well as purchases the, the property. So the intent of this ordinance is to encapsulate all those costs into one, into this ordinance to move it forward. So our fees will include post-design, which is construction administration and inspection. We, we bill those inspection services at an hourly rate.
Right.
And we, we've put in there, the, the contract time on this project is 120 days. So we base that number on 120 days worth of construction. We anticipate it'll go much quicker than that, but as you guys have seen, most construction projects aren't going much quicker than that. So rather than err on the side of optimism, I'm erring on the side of reality on, on that project. Hopefully, it goes quick.
Right.
Lawler, we got a good, we got a good contractor on the project. He feels like he can get the materials in and get moving, and it suggested it's probably about a 60-day timeframe there. And so that's the way it'll work. So ideally, when it's done, we'll be coming back with a, you know, a, a surplus on that ordinance. But I, I just felt it best to, to go in with all the anticipated costs we felt like we needed. And certainly, we were shy originally.
Right.
But, you know, we were, we were taking a stab at it at about 30,000 feet. You know, we've got the design done. We've done all the property acquisition efforts. On and on it goes. So we didn't anticipate it taking 12 months plus to get all of that done. But yeah, property owners in California, COVID, everything else, so.
Okay. Yeah, that was, that was my initial, see, $95,000, and then see, what, what's it come up to, like 281,000 now? It just seemed like a huge number.
It is.
And I didn't know, obviously, I just want to make sure that we're being wise with money and, and whatnot. So that's why I felt the need to ask, so.
Well, that's why we're here.
Yes.
For you guys to decide whether or not you want to do the job.
I've, I've got one for you, Ben. The general services during construction of $3,950, should that not be included in the services that are paid to Man Shack monthly?
I don't know that I understand the question.
Well, I mean, they've got in here, general services during construction of $3,950. I know the city pays them a fee every month for, for general services, and I'm just wondering, should that be included?
The city pays us a fee to manage public utilities. This is a, what we would consider a capital improvement project. We have a separate contract to do that work, and those services come directly out of that particular contract. So this is a contract that's already been approved by the city. We, we invoice on that contract based project specific, and, and the city issues POs based on those projects. So there's always a little bit of construction administration. We're dealing with contractors handling pay applications. We've got inspection, contract disputes, on and on it goes. So there's a little money in there to take care of that component of it, and then we have onsite inspection as well, which the city's always asked us to provide.
So, I mean, so pretty much all of this in here, I mean, most of this, y'all are ju, y'all are subbing out. Man Shack is not doing...
We don't sub out the construction administration or the inspection, but everything else is, is by separate PO directly with the city. But those aren't, we're not, we're not passing those expenses onto the city. Those are separate invoices and POs directly with the city for that, that work.
I, I understand. I, I know, I know bypass pumping is, is very expensive.
It is.
Usually, what, about $5,000 a week, something like that, what that?
On this particular project, it's running a little less than $5,000 a month.
A month? Okay. Does the city or Man Shack, do, do we not own pumps?
We do.
Okay, but you're having, I guess, other pumps are being used?
Believe it or not, that's not, we're not, what the city is renting there is, is the tubing. If you go out there, there's about 3-plus-thousand feet of lay-flat hose that's currently there. And that's not something that we keep a rental, we don't have that much piping. We're bypassing a long way, so we've got physical assets by the pump station. Those are the cities, but the hose is what we're, we're leasing out there. And if we had it on the yard, you know, and we'd use it again, that $50,000 number, we're projecting that all the way through the end of construction. So hopefully, it's not that much, but if it is, we'll, we'll have resources there to take care of that.
I, I know Bruce Street is not, not a very big street. I mean, it's basically just kind of a horseshoe that wraps around, back around to O'Keefe Street. I mean, do you look after, after this one is done, do you foresee any other prob? I know you can't predict anything out there, any, any foreseeable problems with the rest of the infrastructure out there?
Yeah, that's an old area of town. Bruce Street specifically, this, this project, we call it the Bruce Street Pump Station. So that pump station services that whole area, not just that street. And the, the hose, the, the piping, the temporary piping right now goes from there south all the way to Highway E.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You, you, you said something that triggered a thought. What is, can you explain the resident inspection of 45,000?
So resident inspection is just that. We have an onsite inspector that's making sure that the project's being placed in accordance with the plans and specifications. Right now, as you know, the city has basically one and a half inspector
Right.
for construction. So that, that ensures that the city is getting the, the project that, that's on the plans and specs. We can't be there, you know, within public utilities, we, we're out fixing water mains, sewer mains, operating water plants, sewer plants. We don't have staff to physically watch contractors every day, all day.
Right.
So that's what it's, it's for.
Is that, is that billed out hourly, and you just kind of estimate?
No, it's not. We estimate that number based on the total days of construction, but we invoice based on the hours our inspectors put on that project.
Okay. Because I, I had gone back and looked at other projects, and I, I have yet, I couldn't find any projects where we, we paid that much. I mean, Melrose, we paid about $22,000, Bardot in Montgomery Lane, $12,000 and $19,000. And so that, that number kind of stuck out as a number that's much higher than what we've seen previously.
And you'd probably see on all of those in the PO, we asked for much more than what we actually ended up needing on that, that project. It's based on, again, we're, we're having to crystal ball gaze as to what we think it's going to be. But usually, you know, we're not there if the contractor's not there. So usually, you know, if the contractor's only, whatever time it takes for that to do it, you're not paying us just to sit there while nothing's happening.
Right. Okay.
Counsel, any more questions? Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance allocating $300,000 to come from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund for on-demand water meter purchases. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance amending the Bojer City, Louisiana Code of Ordinance, Section 78-7, classified and unclassified, service generally to include the position of tax compliance and processing manager in the classification plan assignment of job classes to grade levels. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $12,124 to come from the Hotel Motel Taxes Fund to be used for tree removal project for the Brookshire Grocery Arena. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
This is just dead trees at the arena. We had cleared some, I think, last year, and then there's more died during this, during the last snowstorm that froze. So that's all, this is removing the trees before they fall and hit someone. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two police officers, one communications officer and one jailer for the Bojer City Police Department. First and final reading?
Counsel, I need to make a, amend this ordinance.
Resolution.
Huh?
Resolution.
Resolution.
Oh, the resolution, I'm sorry. Anyway, this is a typo. Instead of two officers, we need to change that to one police officer.
Second.
We need to just read it like that or reintroduce it?
That, you'll have to reintroduce it after you amend it. You'll need a public comment.
Yeah. Any questions about this, this ordinance or resolution from our audience? Counsel, any questions? Can't get my finger going right.
And that was at the request of the chief?
Yes.
And so now I would need a, a motion to adopt as amended.
I'll make that motion that we adopt the resolution as amended.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one building maintenance position due to retirement. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one permits and inspections position due to retirement. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for the Water Distribution Division in the Public Utilities Department. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
That's our agenda. We just have reports from, uh, Angela.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler, you have before you the financials for the month ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. These are preliminary results since we have not closed out the year yet. Page one is the revenue by fund report. The city's currently running nineteen percent over budget. Gaming revenue increased twelve percent for the month of December and has significantly increased compared to prior year. Sales tax is doing well, up seventeen point five percent compared to December twenty twenty. Page two is the expenses by fund report. The city's currently running four percent under budget. The alternative fuel stations are notably over budget, but the revenue is as well at a hundred and forty-seven percent. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. As previously noted, sales tax revenue is up seventeen point five percent compared to December twenty twenty. Page four is the manning report. The city has one less employee than last month. The total employees as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one is six hundred and fifty-one. This is forty-four pers, forty-four employees below the budgeted total of six hundred and ninety-five. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for December twenty twenty-one is twenty-eight percent of what it was December twenty twenty, which is a seventy-two percent decrease. Current year-to-date net operating is a hundred and two percent of what it was for the same period prior year, which is a two percent increase. And it is sixty-four percent of the budget, which is thirty-six percent under budget. On a rolling twelve-month basis, the current net operating income is seventy-nine percent of the prior twelve-month period, or down twenty-one percent. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Engineering, Mr. Clinton.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor, run through our monthly engineering report. Still got a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars of ongoing projects that are either in design or construction, with about a hundred and thirty-two million of that that's actually in construction. Uh, we've still got eleven projects that are in design or nearing the bid phase, seventeen projects under construction, and we have eleven subdivision that are in or nearing the construction phase. This is a new little chart. Uh, it shows our projects that are in construction. Long story short, green, we're on schedule. Red, we're not so much. And we'll kind of break down some of the key projects that we got going on. So Coleman Street, we're getting near the end of it. As you see here, we've got, uh, soil cement being cut. That was finished up last week. As the contractor was actually beginning to lay asphalt this week, hoping to have the binder course of the asphalt laid all the way until McCormick. And then they will be looking at rehabilitating from McCormick to, uh, Hamilton Road, opening up that section to local traffic and no-through traffic. And, uh, spoke with DOTD this morning. Um, they believe about February one, we're blowing and going and having everything done. Now, that's obviously permitting weather. They can't lay asphalt unless it's, I believe it's got to be fifty degrees and rising. So if we get a stretch of cold weather, contractor can't lay any asphalt. Tinsley, uh, we are, construction is complete. Uh, they're still performing some cleanup items, some final touch-up items. Big thing to note would be, we have a ribbon cutting scheduled for January twenty-ninth with a, I believe it's a, kind of like a walkthrough between three and five afterwards. East Bank Fire Station, uh, it's progressing. They, uh, hit a little bit of snag in some of the material delivery, um, but they are moving. They are catching up, so with the designer this morning, uh, that project should finish on time. LTRI, uh, I do have somewhat of a delay on this project, again, with materials. And at the beginning of the project, it was very, very wet, trying to get everything into the ground, get up and out of the ground. Uh, they, we have not reconciled days for this project since, I believe, June, so they are due some weather days. And, uh, contractor is very confident that they are on schedule with the weather days that they are owed. Cliff and Arm and Park Restrooms, we are, uh, we issued a substantial completion last week. Uh, you can see there, we got the nice baseball coming up above the, above the restrooms. If y'all haven't made a visit out to look at those, it looks, looks really good out there with everything that's been going on, the improvements out at that park as well. Looks really good. South Bossier, uh, we're treading behind a little bit on, on schedule. Uh, this is mainly due to some conduit issues and the complexity of laying the conduit for the streetlights. Spoke with the designer as well, along with the contractor. Um, they're due some time regarding that project, and they're blowing and going, making a lot of, lot of headway, now that we're kind of out of the ground with the electrical. So twenty-twenty-one city sidewalk and street improvements, uh, this is kind of like a breakdown of what we completed last year. Uh, we still have a couple of outstanding items trying to wrap up some stuff. Um, as you can see, we've spent a lot of money, but we've also done two-point-six-five miles of re, roadway rehabilitation. And compared to twenty-twenty and twenty-nineteen, we only rehabbed about one-point-one miles. So we did more than the past two years combined. We also believe we're going to shoot for another two-point-five, two-point-seven miles of roadway for twenty-twenty-two with the additional funds that we've, that we're purposing in the twenty-twenty-two budget. And I believe we've got meetings scheduled at the end of this week to discuss how to move forward with those projects. Private development, we're still, we've still got our private developers blowing and going. Uh, we've got, I believe, that is Tiburon in the bottom. That's unit fifteen. And also Canal Place Unit Three is the top picture there. Got some super stub outs and getting ready to start laying the drain boxes. Our projects out to bid are, they're in design. Uh, as you can see, we've got a nu, number of projects, I believe it's eleven, that we've got. We've got about three or four that are getting ready to bid. Highway seventy-one lighting is one of those. I believe we've got a bid scheduled for March first, and that'll be the lighting down seventy-one from, uh, down towards Parkway High School. And we've also got the municipal, municipal complex parking lot expansion getting ready to bid. And, uh, still working on property acquisition for the Parkway Drive Elm Grove Ditch improvements, working with the school board on getting some easement acquisitions, as well as the property owner across the street. Traffic engineering, we have a pre-bid scheduled for tomorrow with the contractor, uh, Bossier Parish Police Jury, as well as DOTD for the turn lane extensions on Highway Three at I-220. And, uh, we're also working with a, uh, looking to have a meeting scheduled this week with our traffic software provider to see the options that we have to get all of our communications and our signal cabinets upgraded, so we're not having somebody run from, if we've got a problem in North Bossier and Traffic Superintendent in South Bossier, he can plug in with his laptop and troubleshoot from there. Uh, tra, we also had the traffic signal study and plans being performed for the traffic signal at Swan Lake Road and Innovation Drive. We received additional traffic counts. That traffic signal is now warranted on, under DOTD and ASHTO guidelines. And we are refreshing those plans and hoping to have those finished in the next two months, and then we'll look at getting those out to bid. A big one that we got was the urban systems. We got the final report on our traffic synchronization study. And I'll try to show some of the results that we have here. Uh, I've highlighted three areas that I'm going to try to show, so a couple of examples of some improvement. Uh, the top one being that is from Central Park to Monica Street on Barksdale Boulevard. As you can see, in the, uh, if you're going east in the afternoon, trying to go home, it shows that they had zero bandwidth, which basically means you're going to get caught by red lights and you're not going to be able to continue on through. With the proposed changes that they show, we're showing about a sixty-seven seconds of increase, which is dramatic when we're talking about traffic. The second one being on Benton Road from Riverwood Drive to Old Menden. This one would be southbound traffic in the morning with an increase of sixty-one seconds. And Airline Drive from Brownlee Road to Douglas Drive in the PM going north, going from nine seconds of bandwidth to fifty-four seconds of bandwidth. And just to kind of show you what we're dealing with, this is what they provided. The gray here shows our bandwidth, going from signal to signal. This would be from Central Park going to Monica. And if you're going, uh, this is traffic traveling west. And as you see, there's no gray band going east. So it's showing we have zero bandwidth for traffic going that way. The proposed, not, we not only maintained what was going back west, but we gained sixty-seven seconds going east. This is Benton Road in the morning, from Riverwood Drive and Old Menden Road, zero bandwidth in both directions. So if you're traveling and you get to Riverwood Drive and you've got a green light and you're traveling the speed limit, you're going to catch a red light at shit. And if you tried to catch that, you were going to end up possibly catching the red light at Old Menden Road. With the proposed changes, we've got southbound traffic gaining sixty-one seconds of bandwidth. And then this would be the Airline Drive that we talked about, going from Brownlee to Douglas. We have southbound traffic going to the right, northbound traffic going to the left. As you can see, we only have a little bit of bandwidth going north, with zero bandwidth going south. After the proposed modifications, we're gaining up to fifty-four seconds of bandwidth coming back north for people traveling north. The next step would be to take these, uh, TSI's or our traffic signal inventory reports, the proposed changes. There, if we are doing any phasing changes, we do have to have DOTD approval, because a lot of these signals are DOTD and the city just maintains them and operates them. And we are looking to get assistance on that, to get that approved. It shouldn't take too long, shouldn't take a whole lot of effort. But once we get those changes, we will, uh, look at having those in place for about a month or two. It will take drivers some time to adjust, as we're going to go to fixed timing. And with fixed timing, it will require drivers to drive around the speed limit. So if a driver's going five to ten over, potentially could catch a red light, could get there too quickly. But these will be fixed time based on the speed limits of these main corridors. And then once we get the signals modified, we're going to try to, like I said, give it about a month or two, give drivers time to adjust, and then go back and take additional data to see if we are, in fact, meeting the proposed bandwidths and actually getting some decent results when it comes to the data collection. Lot of information I just threw at you. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Uh, are there any announcements? Mayor, you got anything to say?
Nothing after that.
All right, meeting's adjourned.